Mr. Blair, I'm gonna resend council's invitations, just to make sure that everyone has them handy.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for resending it, Brian. I was actually clicking on it when you sent it. I'm getting so many these days, I just don't know which one is which.
I know the feeling. Alright, so we've got Lloyd, Michael, Sina. I just sent Heather's. And then...
Sorry about that. Thank you, Brian.
Yep.
Brian, I see Marty Silman in the attendees. Could we make him a panelist as well? He might have a... There might be some questions that he would need to answer.
We just gave him a field promotion.
Promotions, the right word. Sounds too positive. Moving on up.
Generally, field promotions are not all that positive.
I promoted myself to a different closet than I was in earlier with Mr. Blair, where I didn't get good signal. Dodging these kids is getting to be difficult. They're everywhere.
Yeah, well, if there's any sort of thumping and banging, they're replacing my roof right now, so... Yeah. Sometimes the dog is also going a little bit nuts.
There were some materials that were emailed to us that I'm trying to track down. Does anybody remember who sent them?
I just went to the website, downloaded the council packet that Kena posted from staff.
Does that have the PowerPoint or whatever it was? Okay.
And I'll be sharing my screen, so we'll be going through it.
Okay. Vice Mayor McGill, do you think we should just call to order now and take role? And I'll just introduce the panelists at this time.
I'm happy to do that. Um... So...
There she is.
There she is.
Murphy's Law.
Alright, good. What is it? Hi, everyone. How are you all doing? I called this meeting to order. Couldn't figure out whether it was afternoon or evening. Ms. Thomas, would you do roll call, please?
Mr. Payne.
Here.
Mr. Snook.
Here.
Ms. Walker.
Here.
Ms. McGill.
Here.
Ms. Hill.
Here.
And I'll turn the meeting over to Mr. Blair.
Alright. Thank you, Mayor Walker. Counselors, as you know, the purpose of today's work session is to discuss the West Main Streetscape project. In your Brady Bunch Panel Assembly here, you'll see a number of folks from different departments that are the subject matter experts that hopefully, I mean, we can give you a comprehensive view of this project and where it stands now. We've got representatives from utilities, budget, public works, as well as NDS. I will turn the meeting over to Jeanette Yonachek. She's gonna lead us through a PowerPoint and discussion through those slides, but first, I would like to know, would council prefer to ask its questions while the presentation is going forward? Or to save them till the end?
I like to do it while we're going through stuff, but that's just a personal preference.
I would say there may be some questions I would want to ask sort of on the fly, but would tend to hold less...
Yeah.
If it's something that needs to get clarified right away, I would ask it at the time. Otherwise, I'd probably hold it.
I agree with that.
At least wait until the end of each speaker. Unless it's... Would be more helpful to our understanding.
Okay. Alright, well, I will turn it over to Jeanette and look forward to this.
Alright, good afternoon, everyone. Let me pull up the PowerPoint slide and share that. Start at the beginning. Can everyone see my screen? Excellent. So I've broken this out into several different sections. One is project history, another is funding and status. And that is broken out into each phase. Then we're talking about next steps, have a moment for public comment, and then have direction forward and wrap up. So the overall objective of this presentation is to provide a very high-level overview to update individuals on the status, introduce maybe the project to some new counselors, though I'm sure you know something of it, but we're gonna get into a little bit more detail. Just talking about the current status, associated costs. We're not really going into design details for this one, or we weren't intending to. And we're really seeking direction from you all as to what kind of support City Council has for this project, what type of scope, the value engineering and budget input, as well as the final disposition of the statue, Sacagawea Lewis and Clark. So the first section is project history. This was not just a streetscape project, this was an overall look of West Main. So there were different components, whether it's the parking study or a review of the zoning that took place in 2003. We started to see the impact, and that was revisited in 2016, separating the two zoning on either side of the bridge. We are currently, we developed a schematic design plan, which is basically a concept, and we've advanced that to through 60% design plans. So that's currently where we are. Through the process, we had different modes of public involvement. There was a steering committee established, there were seven meetings. Some of the individuals served in multiple capacities. So you've had Place Design Task Force, but they also might be on the BPAC or a neighborhood representative. So... This isn't intended to be all-inclusive, but we did also meet with Place. BAR's reviewed the plans. UVA has been updated several times. We've met with the Midtown Business Association. Most recently, there was a coronation with Charlene Green and Jeff Warner regarding the historic interpretation and individuals interested in that from the community. There were also stakeholder group meetings where we grouped people by interest or by relationship, so independent foundations and landholders and developers, businesses and restaurants, community groups. That was over a two-day period. We've had four pretty large meetings. These are older. We are planning to continue with our public involvement, depending on our direction forward. So these are the four general public meetings. And then we've also been meeting with City Council and updating you. As of March 21st, 2016, we disbanded the steering committee, and City Council is now serving as the steering committee. So are there any questions regarding project history?
I'm just curious, was the reason that council disbanded the steering committee and took it over as themselves now being the steering committee, was there some particular reason for that? Were they mad at the steering committee or something?
I don't think so. I think that they felt like the steering committee had completed their work and that you all wanted to take over as direction moved forward on the project.
And then the most recent kind of timeframe, I know that a couple of times, things have been put in front of me through 2-2-1s or something to council. What we say is kind of what's the current status, aside from us, like obviously, keeping moving forward, like what has kind of been like the gap that we're seeing in these timelines of when it was really, really active, a lot of movement going on, and now there's been kind of a lull. Obviously, there's last six months is a very different story, but even just thinking about like 2019 and just trying to figure out that bridge, and then obviously, we're gonna be talking about what we're doing going forward.
Sure, we changed project management, so this was moved over to the Transportation Division. And we have been working with the consultants in adapting what was developed as a local project into now a state-funded project. So revisiting the contract, making sure that all the requirements are met, and then trying to get direction to move forward. So you'll see some of these steps of, if I can get direction on this, we can move forward, like the environmental document, things of that nature. Okay. Alright, moving forward to funding status. So local funds have been used to develop the master plan, the 30% and the 60%. It was at this point, we started looking for outside funding. So we broke out the corridor into four phases. First one is Ridge to Sixth, then Phase Two is Sixth to Eighth, Phase Three is Eighth to Roosevelt Brown, and then Four is Roosevelt Brown to Jefferson Park Avenue to complete the corridor. Each of these phases can be done independently. That's a requirement, that there's logical termini, that they serve a transportation use, that they do not require you to complete another phase and don't preclude you from doing something else. So we could do one, or two, or none, or what have you of these phases. I've broken them out into different... The funding for each phase, and then in the last slide, it's all rolled up together. So we can take a look at the overall project. So the first phase of developing this project from a local project to a state and federal is reviewing the overall estimate. During the planning phase, there was a lot of discussion about the construction estimate, and the construction estimate being 31 million. And when we started taking it over from the transportation point of view, we don't talk about construction estimate. We talk about from beginning to end, this is how much it's going to cost the city to complete the project, design, right-of-way, construction inspection, and construction, VDOT oversight, everything that's included. So you're going to see a change in these numbers from the 31 million construction estimate, which is still accurate, to what the whole project, kid and caboodle, is going to cost you. So for Phase One, we have the PE of 1.7 that is designed to finalize everything, which is really the big crux of making sure the construction documents are accurate, that we finalize coronation with all the internal stakeholders, making sure we're meeting current requirements, and making sure, in particular, we're meeting state requirements. We're also having the consultants look from a federal standpoint. We do not want to do Phase One, Phase Two, which are both just state-funded, to the point where in Phase Three, if we get federal funding thrown on the project, we're not able to continue with, say, the light feature, or we're gonna have to change tactics with something. We want to make sure that it's consistent, regardless if it's state or federal funding. We have right-of-way. A lot of the right-of-way on this corridor is temporary construction easements. The other is permanent easements for the utility undergrounding. We're not looking to acquire any parcels, displace any businesses, anything of that nature. I did break out the franchisee private utility relocation. That's 4.3 for this phase. The reason why I did that was that has to be paid for out of local dollars. It cannot be paid for out of transportation dollars. It's considered a betterment. And VDOT is considered about, you know, concerned about moving vehicles or people. They're not concerned about undergrounding utilities unless it's a requirement due to space or some other conflict. Construction is 9.8, bringing the total of this phase to 16.7. There is contingency in here, particularly construction contention, save 20%. Right-of-way, there's an additional contingency for that. So the funding that we have allocated for this phase is 3.3 from revenue sharing, state, and local is 13.4. So this is a funded phase. Phase Two, 1.2 for PE. We have right-of-way acquisition, and then the franchisee utility relocation of 4.6 million, bringing the right-of-way cost to 5 million. Construction of 7.3 with a total of 13.5. Again, there's contingency on here, there's escalation on here, negotiation room on here. So the funding for this, so far, has been identified 2 million in revenue sharing, 2 million in smart scale, and then 7.1 in local. We currently have 2.4 that's unidentified. We're gonna talk a little bit about the value engineering phase and how we can get these numbers down possibly, changing the scope. And we're also gonna talk about maybe contingency. Right now, it's a little high. I mean, 20% is kind of normal, but for this type of work, that alone for these two phases is a little over 2 million.
Can I ask one quick question, just to clarify?
Sure.
When we're talking local, what does that mean? Does that mean our capital improvements, our CIP budget?
The CIP budget has funded this project, yes.
Or that we're, I mean, it's not necessarily funded yet. We would have to have bonds for it, but it's been put into our CIP?
It's been put into the CIP, and it's in SAP. But budget would have to let you know whether it, the bond has been released or not. That I don't get involved in. I just know I can spend it right now if I wanted to. That's...
We have not sold any bonds for West Main Street. And not all of it is in the CIP. Some of it has been approved, some of it is planned in the out years. But it is part of our five-year plan.
Okay, so when we were looking at the CIP a couple of weeks or a month or so ago, this was factored into some of the numbers that we were being given.
Yeah, we have about 18.2 million dollars that have been approved in terms of approved CIPs to sell bonds for, for this project. There's an additional 4 million contemplated in the 22 CIP that has not yet been approved.
And I just went ahead and took the projected and put that in as funded, if that helps explain things a little better. So, moving on to Phase Three. Phase Three has been submitted for smart scale application in this latest round. We will hear about the outcome of that in early of 2021. And we would expect funding to be available at the latest July 1st, 2025, with the possibility of escalating if we actually got funded and we can move these phases along faster. These numbers have been inflated, given how far out we're expecting the project to be. So PE has a 15% contingency. Right-of-way has a 20%, construction has a 25%, and then VDOT includes its own escalation factor so that all the applications are evaluated the same. So that grew the budget from like a $6.8 million budget to a 10.3 or 10.4. You'll notice that there is no undergrounding of private utilities. There is none expected for this phase of the project. The vast majority, almost 10 million of it, is in Phase One and Phase Two. Phase Four, as you will see, there's just a tiny bit left to complete this corridor. So we have smart scale at 10.3. We're not sure if it's going to be state or federal. VDOT did us a favor because we had so much state money on this project of not federalizing it for the small amount of smart scale that we got on Phase Two. So we're not sure if that's gonna hold. It's probably going to be federal. Phase Four, we're looking at 1.4 for PE. The undergrounding is 1.3 with the right-of-way cost of 1.8. Construction is 5.8 for a total of 9 million. This is unidentified. There is contingency, but there is no escalation because I'm not quite sure when we would expect to start construction, so I didn't just want to keep inflating something, not knowing what number we're trying to hit. So...
Can I ask one quick question? As you're talking about these contingency numbers, as we've had conversations with schools about just cost of construction in this current world, like what factor will that play in? Because it does seem like there might be some opportunities to really jump into some more significant projects in today's environment and maybe save on some construction costs, or is that not what you guys are sensing for this type of work?
Before COVID, we were seeing a rapid increase in pricing, and that had to do with the amount of funding that was being released on transportation projects, so the number of projects that were out there, and then the relatively low or stable number of contractors. So we were seeing escalation. As of now, we don't quite know what we're going to see in the future. Belmont is going to be a good bellwether kind of determination. We always build in contingency or try to, to avoid coming back and asking you all for more money. So we're trying to be reasonable. We're not trying to overblow the budget and scare everyone. If there is contingency left over, we always return that to, of course, you all. The objective is to not spend every dime that we get. So for the interchange, we're able to return money. For Hillsdale, we're able to return money. Hopefully, we'll get the same result with Belmont. So, we're not sure yet.
Did I miss the contribution from the university?
No, that is going to come up
Okay.
in the next slide.
Okay.
Well, no, sorry, two slides from now.
Okay.
So, the next slide shows Phase One through Four, so you get the overall concept of what the projects, the whole corridor is going to cost you. So design is 5.2. Right-of-way is 12.5. It's relatively low, 2.4, because again, it's just temporary construction easements to blend in the project with the neighboring parcels. But the 10.2, that's that private undergrounding. That's kind of hefty. And then the construction is still 31.5 million. So that does bring a grand total of 49.3. We have a total of 5.3 in revenue sharing, 2 million in smart scale, local of 20.5. As Chrissy pointed out, we're still expecting another 4 million in the next fiscal year. So the funding is 27.8. We have applied for the 10.3 revenue sharing, or sorry, smart scale application for Phase Three, which leaves an unfunded amount of 11 million. I did not include in these figures all the effort to date that was simply local money that got us to this point, and that's 3.159. That's how much has been spent to develop the plan up to 60%. And then also included in this is utility design. We've spent 226,000... We've spent 226,000 and we expect another 245,000. And we'll get into a little bit more detail on that later.
Is there a sense of how competitive that smart scale application is? Or if it seems likely that VDOT would score it favorably, or is that largely an unknown at this point?
Well, we are pretty competitive based on we're an urban location. So we can get a lot of points on our pedestrian improvements. On, I was able to max out the amount of square footage of development that we're expecting adjacent to this corridor, which is over a million square feet. So that's pretty good. The concern I have is the cost. The district was expecting 20 million for the whole district of Culpeper. We're asking 10.3 right off the top. So it has a lot of benefits and we'll have to see how that weighs out against what other projects, other localities have submitted, which changes every year and it's hard to kind of anticipate. Another way of making this more competitive is buying down the cost of the project. So the cheaper we can make the project, the more likely the benefit will give us a good score. And one of the ways to do that is with leveraging UVA's commitment. So we had a previous commitment from UVA in March 2018 for $5 million in support of projects adjacent to the grounds. I don't believe that we ask for any money for Brandon Avenue, which allows the 5 million left over. And the letter states that it will remain available for West Main Street, Streetscape project. Assuming that this would be more applicable to phase three or phase four, which is much closer to grounds. So we're going to get into future maintenance. All of these improvements are wonderful. They're going to give us a clean slate on a lot of different areas such as paving, stormwater, lighting, the whole bit. But there is a cost to maintaining this increased infrastructure. So back in 2017, we had Public Works do a little cost estimate. They came up with a $57,000 annual cost to maintain West Main as it is now. With the new design, we're looking at basically 200,000. We're no longer doing the raised crosswalks, so you can eliminate that. A lot of this has to do with, it appears, the historic signage interpretation, which we've kind of dialed back, but don't expect that number to go down drastically. So that's from the Public Works perspective. From the Parks perspective is they maintain the downtown mall and the corner on a much higher level than they do other places throughout the city or for the streets. They stop on West Main or University Avenue at that point at the railroad bridge, 14th Street. What they'd be looking to do is increase, if we proceed with West Main, of making this basically an extension of the downtown mall or the corner. So that increases the trash removal, the blowing, the sweeping, the whole bit. So you're, they were looking at requesting 3.5 additional full-time employees, one supervisor, two and a half regular employee. Your little box is covering my numbers now. Let me see if I can. So in labor cost and minor materials, you're looking at 167,000. This would not happen right away. This is for the whole corridor. So obviously when one corridor finishes, that portion then starts adding to this. With our construction of Streetscape projects and other roadway improvements, we typically add a two-year maintenance period as well. So there would be no watering, pruning, mulching, tree replacement, weeding, or any of that for two years that, that's paid for under our contract. But as these get added, Parks was also looking at other capital expenses. So they feel that after phase one, they would need a crew vehicle and small engine equipment for roughly 82,000. And after phase two, they were looking to add the water truck and additional sweeper for another 150,000. If the project does not move forward, there is concern about the health of about 30% of the trees that are out there. So that would need to be replaced in phases or all in one go. But that's a possibility. And speaking of the future, if West Main does not move forward as we've scoped or as we intended, we are looking at upcoming maintenance needs that need to occur now. So we have a full signal replacement at Ridge McIntyre Road and South Street that was installed in 1960. You're typically expecting 30 years on a traffic signal. So we're on borrowed time with that one. The next one that would be coming up would be 10th and Roosevelt Brown Boulevard. If we again replaced it at the expected 30-year mark or recommended 30-year mark. So that would be in 2031 that the city would be looking to do that. We've also reviewed the pedestrian ac- acuation. It's the countdown at the signals. We're missing them or they don't currently meet today's standards at the four signals listed below. We're also, we've been deferring paving West Main. We've seen a lot of development. No point in replacing it now. And we were expecting West Main to happen. So it was last paved in 1996. It definitely needs to be repaved and striped. Then you have the general maintenance that you expect with the lighting and the sidewalk and the signage. And in addition, when we repave, we will need to replace or install the missing curb ramps that you see listed on the slide, as well as there are some curb ra- curb ramps that we're not aware of. We haven't counted them yet that will need to be upgraded to meet today's ADA standard. That's a requirement. So those would be the costs that you're looking at.
That, that sheet just kind of reflects that regardless, if, if we don't, you know, something didn't move forward with this, that these are all still things that have to, we have to do some kind of streetscape improvements for a litany of reasons. Okay.
Due to the age of the infrastructure out there, yes, there will need to be work done on West Main. We've been deferring it, thinking this would happen.
Do we have a rough idea of what that would cost?
We do not. We do not. Um, we're talking 300,000 at least for that signal at Ridge McIntyre and South. It's a little unusual. Not sure about the paving and the striping. It, it adds up and we could certainly get you that figure. So, speaking of something that has to happen, regardless of whether the Streetscape happens or not, is the water and gas line replacement. We're at the end of our useful life for the water line. We also need to increase capacity for all the things that are being built on West Main. So we're looking at 3,700 linear feet of 10-inch water line that will need to be installed. And it's being upsized to 12-inch. The gas line that's 10 inches out there is also at the end of its useful life. Or if you're digging up the water line, you might as well dig up the gas because it would be far behind. That was installed in 1930. Looking at 5,000 linear feet of low-pressure 10-inch gas line that's going to be replaced with a high-pressure 4-inch gas line. There's also an additional 4,710 linear feet of polyethylene gas line and associated services that are also going to need to be replaced. This design is being funded and coordinated with the West Main Streetscape project, but it needs to occur before the Streetscape project. If for no other reason, it needs to get out of the way so that we can underground the private utilities.
And are those costs built into the, the $49 million or whatever it was?
No, only the design is being paid for out of West Main. DPU or Department of Public Utilities has that cost in their CIP request.
Okay.
For construction. We're looking at another six to seven months of design if we really speed things along and about a year of construction.
And is does that gas line service the university or is it completely separate from the university? Because I know they have a plan, I believe, to, to phase out their use of fossil fuels by 2030. So I just wonder the extent to which that would be a stranded asset if it is servicing the university.
I'm not sure if it's servicing the university. I do know that it's servicing all the buildings along West Main.
Yeah, this, this gas line runs up and it actually turns and runs to the Beta Bridge on Rugby Road. So it really, it really services the, the West Main corridor and corner corridor itself.
Okay, so looking at an aggressive schedule, the soonest we could get things going would be the water and gas line design at the end, or sorry, mid 2021 with construction and bidding ending mid 2022. That gives us time to design not only the rest of the Streetscape, but also the undergrounding of the private utilities and completing the right-of-way acquisition for both of those activities. And that would allow construction of undergrounding to start at the end of 2022 and ending at 2023. And then the Streetscape project itself would be for a year. We're only looking at phase one and phase two, hopefully. And that would be through 2024. So next steps is the value engineering study. We would be looking at the whole corridor. This is a state requirement. It's also a federal requirement once you get to a certain amount. We look this, look at this as an opportunity to improve the project quality. We might, we get fresh set of eyes on how to basically tackle the situation. Maybe more cost-effective alternatives, maybe revising our view of the project. Looking at shortening the construction schedule, just any efficiency that we could possibly come up with and making sure that it's constructible. It's another, again, set of eyes. We always consider the project's purpose and need when evaluating these alternatives, the previous public input, other city departments' responses, public commitments to other boards. And then if we're going to change something, we're probably going to have to redesign it and incur those costs as well. So an example that I gave was for Belmont Bridge. We completed one. It's roughly 40,000 to do a value engineering study of this magnitude. 2.7 million in savings was identified. 1 million of it was actually instituted. There were things that were a big no-go about remove of the pedestrian tunnel at Grave Street. Narrow the bridge, which would not allow us to do our MOT. So we would have to detour traffic off the bridge, which we didn't think was possible. But we were able to relook at the knuckle and how the mezzanine wall was constructed and certain design details that no one really actually know and gets us the same quality product we were looking to get. And the statue relocation. I know we've come before you a few times. May 6, it was reaffirmed that Lewis and Clark and Sacagawea Memorial could be shifted slightly in the, as approved in the schematic design plan. So that was reaffirmed. But then you also had a work session on November 15th, 2019, requesting the eventual removal of this statue. So what I was looking for tonight was if we are proceeding with the project, should the statue be relocated and it'll cost roughly 125,000 that we've assumed to relocate a statue that we don't want with the West Main project? Or would the city be planning to move and maybe store the statue before West Main happens? This will impact how the coordination with the Virginia Department of Historic Resources takes place. And I need to know what the eventual direction is because we don't want to relocate something with state funds only then to take local dollars and completely remove it. So that is a question I have for you all. Next steps, if the project proceeds forward, would be obviously updating the project website with our current activities and future public involvement. We would like to coordinate phase one with phase two if it moves forward. This gives us a lot of efficiencies, less disruption to the corridor. We see a lot of benefits with that. We'd also be finalizing the consultant contract to allow us to update the website and coordinate phase one and phase two. And our next public meeting would be the design public hearing. So hopefully we could hold the value engineering study. Get your input as to how aggressive that should be, how much you want to be included in that process. If there's a dollar value we're shooting for. And then we could report back to the public what those design changes would be at that public hearing. So that was the end of my presentation. And if you didn't have any questions or didn't want to discuss, we could move to public comment, but it's up to you.
I have a comment just to, this has always been expensive project. So I would like to know, once I hear the feedback from the public and other counselors, if what, you know, know the, what the cost would be for those other items that have to get done. If this were delayed in any way. And then in terms of the statue, I think the intention on that has been to move it as quickly as possible. And so we do have three new counselors since then, but, and so have to hear them weigh in. But I would hope that we would be open to moving the statue before phase one.
I thought it was already decided that the statue was being moved. I mean, honestly, I thought that was already had done, that it's, we were just kind of waiting on it to to double check if it was going to Dart and Tau and the Lewis and Clark Center there.
Okay, I think staff's been a little concerned that there is that a plan needs to be developed before the statue would be relocated and what I would like to do is if that plan doesn't come to fruition before West Main, that the city would use local dollars and move the statue before West Main began. And give assurances to the Virginia Department of Historic Resources that that is our intent and that is what we plan to do.
So the resolution that was passed back in November simply directs that the staff present the council with a plan for the removal of the statue from West Main Street. I guess my question is, are you waiting for additional guidance from council before developing the plan? Or who's waiting for whom?
I think there's a question as to where the money will come from in the CIP to move the statue. I think it also that creating a plan of where that will eventually be housed appears to be a long process. I don't know.
Long process for us or for other people?
I think we know we want to get rid of it. I don't know if there's really been agreement on where it's going to go, whether it's to the Dart and Tau Park with the Lewis and Clark group or somewhere else.
So did we ask for, and so this is what I thought was, would be happening. Whether we were asking for submissions or what were our other options to get rid of it? And then there were some concerns about the, where it sits currently, what would happen to that space? And I thought that we would be presented with what those options were.
I, I'm not sure if those options are yet being explored as to where the statue's going. I don't sure, I'm not sure if I'm supposed to be doing that. I could just put it in my backyard at this point. I don't care. And then the second one is the, what do you call it? What was the second part of that? Oh, what would it be doing with the current space? And that was the, we were reserving that area for a future public art installation possibility. There would be seating and things of that nature, but we weren't proposing anything with West Main. That it would be built with West Main.
So the roughly, I think you said it was a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to move it. That is simply to put it on the back of a truck and take it someplace?
The hundred and twenty-five was a ballpark estimate to move it twenty-five feet from where it currently is. So it would be unassembled, stored somewhere, and then reassembled twenty-five feet to the north. The reason why the statue needs to be moved for West Main, we could keep it and just relocate it. But it needs to be relocated with West Main is because we're trying to get rid of that slip lane, that right lane that goes from West Main to right onto Ridge. Yeah. So we're trying to remove that and create a little pedestrian area. Simplify the intersection.
Do we know how much the county spent to move their statue from Court Square?
I do not. I can look into that.
I'd be curious, because I mean, it sounds, my sense of things was it wasn't in the neighborhood of a hundred thousand dollars. If so, then we ought to be talking to whoever that contractor was.
I think it has a lot to do with the unknowns of what is the pedestal? Is the pedestal a piece of granite or is it assembled? And are we trying to carefully disassemble it and relocate it? I think there's a little concern with how it's put together, how we can protect it and how we would reassemble it.
Yeah, the, the over a hundred thousand dollar price is the estimate to take the statue down, store it while West Main was improved and then replace it. It would be much less to remove it and throw it in the dump than it would be to remove it, store it and put it back on the pedestal.
Or presumably, it would also be less than, uh, to, than, um, it would be less to move it and give it to somebody else who then has the obligation to put it up wherever they're gonna put it up.
Correct.
Yeah.
And even if the statue was just moved over to the Lewis without the pedestal, I mean, then you could actually climb on it.
Yes, but it's a historic piece of art. Whether you agree with that assessment or not, that's how VDHR will be looking at this. So that is also part of the hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar price tag is generally, it's not just now we've moved it. Now we need to put a sign and interpret it and there's possible other mitigation that VDHR would require.
So if we use state funds, we have to go that more expensive route of things. If we went out of the general fund, we might be able to do less expensive things.
Yes, and it's the whole thing of they don't, VDHR does not want to dictate what the locality does with their resources. But if we do use state funds, then yes, they do have a say.
I can say personally, I would be interested in an estimate and plan of using general funds then. Moving it to, I guess, I mean, do we know? Who do we need to be working with about the whole Lewis and Clark Center and if it's going there?
Well, let me offer this. I think what I would advise at this point is, is if there's a consensus of council that you do want to look at using local funds to remove the statue. I think it would be imperative upon staff to take a look at, number one, the logistics of dismantling the statue and removing it and also coming to council with options on ultimately where this is disposed. You know, in terms of whether it's the Lewis and Clark Museum, whether it's, it's whether you want us to put out a, a RFP of some sort or whether you want to dispose of it in another manner. But I think if today, if council could give us a consensus that you want to use local dollars to remove the statue, staff would then start to take a look at, again, removal cost combined with disposition options for the council.
And I would like to just say even before that, if we, if there were organizations who responded to the request and that could potentially limit our cost, we would know, if we could know that first, before we are even talking about general fund dollars. Right, um, there may be, there may be a request that comes in that we find suitable and that we can have that conversation over. And the, if the Lewis and Clark Center submits a request and there is a partnership that doesn't require us to pay for the entire removal, whatever that looks like. But I, without knowing that information, I'd be hesitant to just say use general fund dollars to move it without knowing exactly where and then to pay for storage when there could be a location because that's ultimately the goal.
If, if that's understood, if, again, if there's a consensus on council, then we could look at that and first go with sort of an RFP to say, are you interested in the disposition of this statue? And if so, would you be willing to move it or, you know, include a broad, a broad solicitation for outside parties to propose it, like you stated, if, if they're willing to to pay for the disposition cost and the moving cost. I mean, we, we can certainly take a look at that and ultimately staff can then come back to council with, if there are proposals that come in and let you all ultimately take a look at them and make a decision on where this goes.
And I agree with that being the first pass, but I think it is still prudent for us to give a signal to staff that if, what is our preference of it being local dollars versus not? Because it does sound like we have a lot less flexibility if we're going to be relying on it being state dollars. And so I certainly want us to be vetting like who can help us to cover and share these costs. But in the day, it does seem like if we want the flexibility to be able to dispose of this and in a more, in whatever way that we, we can't necessarily be leaning on those, those state dollars. Just seems like it's getting complicated.
And I understand too, and hopefully we'll have a better understanding of what those costs are after this process. Like what the bids will look like for removal if we did not agree with any of the proposals we received.
The one thing I'm against is wasting either local or state dollars by moving it six feet temporarily until we then remove it someplace else entirely. Just so.
You want to just move it and have it go to its destination?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, not move it for a little while, store it, move it again, put it back on West Main Street and then move it again. That's.
And I think that the prior council decided it wasn't coming back to West Main Street. Regardless, it's just a matter of what, when does it get moved?
Okay, great.
And Mr. Blair, in that, you know, solicitation for the proposal, if there can be information in there for the contextualization piece that we discussed with the statue and how that would be handled by the organizations or individuals who would be requesting our consideration.
We'll certainly make that part of the solicitation. If, if they want to provide a, a proposal, we would ask if, you know, ultimately what they plan to do with the statue. And then if there is a public display, what and how they plan to contextualize it.
Okay, does that give you enough information now?
That's certainly helpful. Thank you very much. Yes, please. Thank you. Um, the value engineering as well as the future direction or support of the project, I don't know, again, if you want to discuss this now or after the public comment, which, whichever way.
Yeah, well, counselors, are there any questions at this time before public comment or would you like to wait till after?
I'm not sure that I understand what our decision is that, that we would have to make relative to the value engineering.
To go, okay.
Yes, sorry, apologize. Um, whether to move forward with the value engineering, how aggressive would you like it to be? How much of a role do you want to play in it? Would you like staff to submit, conduct the study, submit their recommendations and have you all provide input?
It sounds like for the Belmont Bridge that, you know, maybe there was even a more aggressive thing put out there that then we still, staff still had the option to kind of tailor back from based on the objectives of that project. But we still have that same flexibility here because certainly want us to stretch ourselves to try to value engineer this as much as possible, but also have the option to evaluate like, oh, does it even make sense? Or is that going to diminish what the objective of the project is? So just in terms of when we think of how, how deep are we asking you to go? It's where I think I'm having the hardest time knowing what direction to get there because I would think that we're going to go to some level of depth, I guess, for trying to talk about dollars. And then some of those dollars, we may decide, no, that doesn't make sense to remove that from scope or doesn't make sense to go in that direction.
Well, and I think with city council serving as the steering committee, it would be good to hear your input. There are certain things on West Main. I certainly hear everyone's comments that this is an expensive project. There are certain design features that if we were provided direction such as, and I know this is a touchy one, the soil cells are very expensive. The level of lighting, the level of site furnishings, the type of transit stop. There are ways to save money, but I'm not sure with this project more than any other project, this is a lot to do with design.
Yeah.
Um, so ensuring that I am and staff is meeting your intent and your direction, I guess I am requesting permission to, to get your input on the value engineering study if you choose to move forward with it.
I guess the counselors, the new counselors, it's even probably before there's any more work to do, since this is really your first opportunity to kind of weigh in on what are your thoughts about continuing as on the current path? Is that something that you all support? If they're doing this value engineering and I think the Belmont Bridge example was a two million dollar reduction based on the figures we just saw, are you comfortable with supporting? And I know it could be different based on, you know, that this is a totally different project. But just how are you all feeling about the support? And if, when I saw that chart of needs, whether we continued or not, is there a different direction that you would want staff to go in? And to give us some information on what the cost would be around those needs versus maybe continuing. And I know staff has done a lot of work, so I'm not at any, you know, way I'm just asking, you know, the questions about just where are we at this point for support? And is there something else that we are interested in seeing?
Well, I would, I would like to know what the, what the cost of those items are. Frankly, more to help justify it in both in my own mind, the whole project in my own mind, as well as in dealing with the people who want to fuss at us for the, you know, the amount of money that's, that's being involved. If we're going to mount an effective defense of the project and why we're doing this, more information would be helpful. It's not likely to change my personal view of how we ought to go forward. It would certainly be, be good information to have.
I can. Those items would mean that we, I think if you were looking at staff telling us what needs to happen here and what are the cost of those things, that would mean that this project is changing and it's not going forward as planned versus if we wanted to continue as planned, then they are asking us, I think, other questions.
Can I, I can show you some information about the cost of some of the elements that were on the slide for the existing maintenance needs. You know, for the, for the signal replacements, the repaving, the restriping, replacement of a lot of the ADA ramps. Um, you're probably in the range of two to three million dollars, just in normal, you know, routine upkeep and replacement of existing infrastructure. Um, there's another consideration, I can't give you a number for right now, is the, sort of the other benefits to like the stormwater improvement infrastructure. So for example, West Main is proposing to replace a lot of the stormwater infrastructure, pipes, endless things like that. That's the number I can't really get right now. But this, you know, routine stuff, paving, striping, sidewalk repairs, handicap ramp, signal replacement, probably in the range of two to three million dollars for that corridor.
That's just to keep the current design of infrastructure, just to replace it to meet the current, today's needs.
Correct.
Not giving us any other benefit beyond that.
Correct. Okay, that's helpful.
Yeah, just to sort of, I'll piggyback on that point. The West Main has been going full speed for some time now. So staff hasn't necessarily been accounting all of the alternative costs, if that makes sense. We could certainly do that exercise, but there's not a fifteen-year running tally of all of the other maintenance costs, which is, but, but to Marty's point, every single ramp on West Main Street needs to be rebuilt because it hasn't been paved since nineteen ninety-six. So not a single one there is compliant. I think there was ten new ramps that are required. Those are be on West Main, that's gonna be every bit of five or six grand a pop. On top of rebuilding all the ADA ramps, all the stormwater infrastructure that's failing. So it is not insignificant. Make an effort to quantify that as best as we can, but it's certainly not insignificant.
Well, let me say, my interest is not to get it to the penny or even to the closest ten thousand dollars, but just, you know, the nearest fifty thousand dollars, hundred, I, I don't know what a reasonable figure is. But if I'm trying to, to defend to people who are complaining about the amount of money that the city is spending on the main street, streetscape, if I can say, listen, we're gonna have to spend five million dollars of this anyway. It doesn't matter for my defense of the project, whether the answer is four point nine or five point one. So I'm simply saying, don't feel a need to get obsessive about the detail.
I guess the question of the value engineering study, I would certainly want to be able to see all that information and have some input on it as a council. Because I guess one of the questions to me is, you know, if in all the different ways to bring the cost of the project down, if we begin to reach a point in certain areas where the intent of the project from the design perspective and some of the bigger picture visions of the project, what if those things get lost or sacrificed in bringing down the cost and some of the questions that brings up? Because obviously, at least from my understanding of the project, it's, as I think you mentioned, it's so expensive because there's this much larger vision of like it being a unique streetscape from a design perspective, way beyond just like the most necessary infrastructure needs.
That can definitely be done. And with the value engineering study, they would propose, instead of using this treatment, we would propose that, and this is the cost savings that you'd be looking at. And that would be obviously something you need to weigh in on.
And that's the level that I think I'm at as well, in terms of what, I mean, there are just certain like foundational things in this design in terms of the infrastructure itself. I don't know that I feel this should be debatable or should be value engineered out. Otherwise, we're losing the whole reason we even need this from a functional standpoint. I'm not going to be the expert designer either, but I do feel like it's worth us looking at the, the costs. I know it's not insignificant and I've seen some of the things input forward and I'm just like, oh, wow, like this is may, maybe this is more than what we need for this facet of, of the project. It's less functional and more on the design side. So I, I definitely agree. I would be interested in having that kind of level of value engineering done that we could assess.
Okay, great.
And separate from that, definitely a huge question mark for me is that V dot funding and what kind of cost reductions would be or if they're necessary at all in order to make that competitive, application more competitive. Because obviously if we're not receiving that or receiving that. Because obviously, if we're not receiving that or receiving that in a reduced amount, you know, we're talking about you know, a significant amount more of local money that's needed on top of what is already extraordinarily expensive project. And I do think it's something that we're going to need to to think about as a council in the context of our um CIP budget over the next, you know, several years, especially as we're thinking about in the context of other projects like school reconfiguration, et cetera.
Um, by taking the statue out, the statue was part of the smart scale application, right?
Um, it was a revenue sharing um application for phase one. It had scoring issues for smart scale. So there was nothing committed to regarding the statue. So we can remove it or not.
I just thought it might make our application more competitive if it was out, maybe. That's all.
Yeah, so phase one is fully funded with the statue, so we're good. It would just be a cost savings that we could apply elsewhere or just reduce the overall cost.
The next application is for a later phase.
Does the 5 million from UVA uh apply to any specific phase or?
Uh, they weren't specific. I know that that figure was, um, they came up with that figure based on a letter from the city where we took all the pedestrian improvements from each of the phases and tallied them up. And that's how the 5 million figure um kind of got established. But I would imagine that they would be most interested, obviously, in applying it as close to grounds as possible. Obviously, they're going to use the whole corridor, but the closer the better. So phase three or four would be most app.
Um, I did just want to, this, this question had come to me from somebody. Um, we've gotten a little bit of interest in the Dury Brown Bridge. Um, and how is that, because I know that's kind of the cutoff point for the West Main Street design. And, you know, how is that going to be kind of worked into this plan?
Okay, so we have worked with the community a little bit on historic interpretation. We're dialing it back a bit. It was pretty um extensive what we were doing. So from the proposal that was submitted by Ms. Ben Yares and Ms. Slaughter, it had to do with adding some additional signage on the bridge. That's certainly doable. Adding banners to the light poles, we'll just have to ensure that that could be accommodated on the light pole that we choose. Um, the light pole that we were looking to use is the same one on Belmont. That helps with maintenance costs and replacement and all of those lovely things. So that could be doable. The third option was um installing some kind of art through a design competition on the panels on the bridge. And we weren't actually trying to touch the bridge, um, go underneath the bridge, touch the railing, the piers, the whole bit. That's going to add a lot of coordination costs, and it's just not necessary right now. So we weren't really thinking about doing the design competition for the art with the West Main streetscape. But if you direct us otherwise, then I'll start judging art.
Well, it's, it sounds like it may make more sense for that to be done, something um, the city does as a separate process, but sort of timed in conjunction in some ways with the West Main streetscape rather than like making it 100% part of the streetscape. Would that be accurate?
Please, please let's not have the engineering division do that. Yes.
I mean, I was just, maybe if we're doing something like that, we open it up like Beta Bridge has done, up it and have it open to the community. But the Charlottesville community instead. Um, is his, with the historicness and the historic importance of Main Street, I'm assuming that our Historic Resources Committee and our Historic Resources Department has been part of this.
I believe they've been part of the interpretation. I'm certain that they will be a part of it as we move forward. Um, I know from the historic district viewpoint, um, we kind of have an exception because it's a streetscape project from the state level. But we've been working with BAR because they are our Board of Architectural Review from Historic District, Entrance Corridor, the whole bit. So they've been involved.
If, if I could just uh to circle back to a question from councillor Snook earlier, I, Mr. Brown, David Brown, our new director of Public Works is on the on the uh meeting uh display here. And and David, you did receive information from the county on their statue removal costs?
Yes, I just presented an inquiry just to find out what the potential cost and was for them, and it was 110,000 total. 61 was associated with construction.
61, I didn't get that last part, 61.
61,000 was associated with construction. In other words, they had to do various improvements as a so with removal of the foundation. So that's also associated with that work. But the total cost was 110,000.
But the cost of just flat out moving the thing was roughly $49,000.
I believe so, yes, sir.
So a lot of money.
Kind of random question, but um with undergrounding utilities, does Dominion pay for that in in most any context, or is that something they never pay for really?
If there were trees that were causing the poles to go down and it was impacting their service, then yes, they would pay. They um paid for a portion on the interchange project for that exact reason. However, because we're requesting it and it's um, it's basically our dime. So they consider it an improvement. They're not asking for it. Will they benefit from this? Absolutely. But so will our citizens.
Must be nice to control state government.
There you go.
All right, well, I guess we can open up um for public comment at this time and then have a final discussion after that.
If you're in the audience and you want to speak to council about the West Main streetscape, just click the raise hand icon in the Zoom webinar. If you're joining us via telephone, you can press star nine to raise your hand. Each person will get three minutes to address council. And our first participant is Peter Krebs. Peter, you're on, go ahead.
Good afternoon, council. Um, thanks for the opportunity, and it was actually good to hear your discussion um before speaking. Uh, I, I think I come from the same place you do, pretty much on this thing. I also wanted to take just a quick second to shout out to to staff for the recent decision to make it safer to walk on the Belmont Bridge. Uh, that's good. We'll talk about it more later. Maybe something similar temporary could happen on West Main as well. Again, uh, future conversation. Um, this project is super important because it's the backbone of our entire transportation network, really. It's the flattest best way to travel between the heart of the city and the uh region's largest employer. COVID has also really underlined how important streetscapes are. So um, now more than ever. People of color are actually several times more likely to be killed or injured as pedestrians and um under investment in infrastructure is undoubtedly a part of that. And often that under investment is cloaked in the language of responsibility, but the effect is not a good one. In fact, a pedestrian lost their life uh a few weeks ago in a nearby location where proper infrastructure was lacking. Um, I, I think it's really smart to explore value engineering, and it, it looks like uh you've arrived at a good process for that. But remember that things like trees, benches and highly visible uh crosswalks are not amenities. They're actually what determines whether someone will use the corridor or not. So you don't have value if people are unwilling to use the infrastructure. So keep that stuff in mind. And also, we know that it's how the road is designed and things like trees and crosswalks that determine how fast someone drives on that road. It's not about the speed limit. And then also, this was in my earlier comments, I know that we agree on it, but the streetscape's visual accused in terms of artwork or other items that are in the streetscape uh play a large role in whether someone feels welcome or not in the corridor. And you could interpret that um how you will. So I'll just close by saying that it's, it's a costly project and um value measures are merited. But there's also been a lot of uh conversation about um uh about this project. It, it's not, you know, something that's, that's uh a fresh thing. So explore value engineering and uh stay focused on the value that the project will deliver. And thank you for all your good service.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kay Slaughter. Kay, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
We can, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm calling uh in from my phone, so I'm not quite sure how it works. Anyway, thank you very much for having, taking my public comment, and thank you uh Ms. McGill for mentioning um the Dury Brown Bridge. And I appreciate the discussion, and uh I think both Ms. Ben Yares and I would be uh especially pleased if we could continue to be part of the public process and know more about when it was going to happen. I do agree that I think Historic Resources Committee and staff should be involved really with the whole West Main Street because there's so many historic resources in addition to the Dury Brown Bridge. Uh, and I agree with the comments about focusing on, uh, you know, letting the public art aspect be part of another project and focusing on uh the potential of flags and the signage. But really, if I hadn't listened to this meeting today, I wouldn't know that the polls are dependent on what you get for the Belmont Bridge and that it's all being done together. And this is the kind of thing that's always so frustrating to citizens that you find out after the fact like, oh, sorry, we already bought the polls and they won't accommodate flags. So I think it's really important to have these design discussions early and to get input uh from a wide variety of people. And again, as I said in a memo that I sent to all of the council members, this is the one memorial, and I later realized, other than Jefferson, that we have to local people, people who lived in Charlottesville and who contributed greatly to our history. So I appreciate it being brought into the conversation, and I hope there will be ways for those of us who are citizens, as well as the people on Historic Resources Committee to participate uh later in the process. Thank you.
Thank you. If you'd like to raise your hand, click that icon in the Zoom webinar. Right now, we don't have any hands raised. If you're on via telephone, you can press star nine. Mayor Walker, no other hands are raised.
Thank you. Okay, I do have one question I about the value engineering. Is there usually a percentage or range that it um that it usually will stop at? Like, it's not going to cut the project by like 50%, right? So is there usually a percentage that you can usually get out of? Like, is it industry standard? Just?
Not that I'm aware of, and that's not how we have tended to view the value engineering. We always, we have been fortunate in the past with our other transportation projects to have enough funding. So we weren't particularly looking for a particular dollar amount. It was just how could we improve it while still being responsible with the federal or state and local dollars?
Okay.
There might be one that I'm just not aware of, and I can look into that.
Just asking for my, if we started comparing for me and my one fifth, you know, vote projects like this up against where we are now with schools, um, reconfiguration project and things like that, then that takes a very different turn for me than it has in the past because we're in a different climate um now than we have been, and we don't know what the long term um looks like. So that's why, that's why I was asking.
Well, and I can, it's good to know because I could communicate this to our consultant that we're using for value engineering. It would be RK and K is who I have a scope with. They're one of our on-call consultant teams, so it was pretty easy to do. But they've also had past experience working with the public and working with city councillors in the past, uh particularly for the interchange. They're currently working on Fontaine. So it's good to communicate to them that we might be open to something that we wouldn't necessarily have been open to on previous projects. As in, there's always a very easy way to save money. Why don't you just do sidewalk on one side and not on both sides? This wouldn't work for this project. It would have worked for the interchange project, but that is something that we wouldn't even consider. So we might get more aggressive suggestions from them if we allow them to go there, I guess is what I'm saying.
What is the rough timeline that it takes to kind of go through that process with a consultant? If we're giving you the go ahead now?
Well, I have the scope ready, so then we would just need to schedule. Um, we've worked out that it could all be done electronically, so that's not an issue. So they take a couple days. Um, well, about a week, looking at the plans and all the previous correspondence. We meet, introduce them to the project and kind of what our goals are. They look intensively for two days, come up with a bunch of alternatives, and then turn around to report. So we're looking at two months, probably.
And I, or go ahead.
Oh.
I'm sorry, uh, just, just real quick to uh Mayor Walker's question. I don't, there is no industry standard for what the value engineering is. It's certainly not going to be 50%. And then if you look at uh Belmont, I think that was on the order of 10% of construction was identified, and we went with 5%. That's probably on the order of what we're going to get here, but as sort of what um Mr. Payne alluded to earlier, if, once you start chopping into even what's um benches, lighting, all of those things, there is a vision that goes into this design and um, you know, that's where you start getting into to how that would work. But Jeanette and I maybe can meet with that consultant and talk about if they could do uh like a first blush of, here are some alternatives. Is any of this stuff either worth entertaining before they do maybe a second iteration of digging down to those details? Um, and I'm, Jeanette's more familiar with this process. You think we could work something out um like that with RK and K? So city council could weigh in earlier in that process.
Well, I Yeah, I think setting it up again for letting RK and K know how aggressive we would like to be, whether we actually do it or not, that's a whole other thing. Um, the value engineering report kind of does it on order of magnitude, so you're not going to get basically, they're going to present all the options, and then it's at that point we evaluate. So there's no need for a second blush, I guess. Just as long as they know in the past, I would have told you, never look at a different light fixture. But in this case, hey, take another look at it. It, can something attractive be found that we would consider? Because I do understand, we do not want to take all the aesthetic treatments off because that does ruin the vision of the project. But if we have five different seating arrangements, can we get by with three? And is that cheaper? Those kinds of little tweaks that before we would have told them, don't even look at that.
If I may also ask, it's also reason for why we're talking with council right now is to get direction on what are your objectives or goals for this project and how we want to incorporate those into it. Those would be taken into consideration.
And uh, again, you know, I'm, I'm I would certainly be interested in in looking at any options, but I think one of the questions that will raise for me, and I imagine council as a whole is if if cuts are reaching a point where we're sacrificing the original intent and vision of the entire streetscape project, the question of what is really the the purpose or intent of of what we're doing if we've made cuts to that extent, um, which I think is tied into the other conversations, again, thinking about, you know, um, other competing CIP needs with school reconfiguration and housing and other things, but um, it's definitely uh something I'll be thinking about in terms of, you know, for making deep enough cost cuts to the projects that are basically eliminate what made it a unique project that became a community priority in terms of creating a streetscape that was unique enough to, for more people. For more people to use it and to perform a different kind of function than it had before. And then final comment is just I would agree with with others about, I think there are a lot of historic resources on throughout West Main Street and Drew Brown as well. So I think that's more a task for us as a a council separately from this process, but I. I hope it's something that we as a council and community are thinking about and taking action on in conjunction with with everything that else is going on there. Because I do think there are a lot of opportunities to. Make history there, not just with the Dury Brown Bridge, but throughout that corridor more prominent and more part of the landscape of the city.
I did have one question about earlier, some of the numbers. There was, you mentioned that with the upgrades, it will be costing more in maintenance, not with the parks and recs maintenance part, but before that. There was a slide about how it was going to cost more in upkeep in general. And I was just a little bit confused as to if we're improving things, why is it going to? Where is that extra cost coming from?
For a time period, there will not be extra costs because it will be brand new infrastructure like you pointed out. It's just that as we add more historic interpretive signs. Or we change the material from a concrete sidewalk to a paver sidewalk. Some of these are more maintenance intensive. We're adding a lot of street furniture, as I've mentioned, soil cells, which the city doesn't have any history with. The soil cells are allowing us to treat the storm water. From quality as well as quantity, and it allows us to have larger trees. It also minimizes disruption with utilities. So that's all wonderful. Oh my, if we have a problem, I guess, is what it just, it's a little bit more expensive. So you might be seeing this further down the line, or you might not be seeing it, but a future counselor might be seeing it. So I'm just trying to say that as we.
We have new interest. New interest to public comment, if you want to hear from another speaker.
Well, let's finish this conversation first, and if we have time, we'll open it back up.
That was pretty much done, yeah.
Just real quick for clarification, if just in case anybody starts Googling it, it's Silva cell, right? Jeanette, you're not, you said soil cell, we're talking about Silva cells, which is proprietary stormwater.
Yes.
If you're curious what that looks like, Silva as in the forest.
Yes, and that's one of the items that I may not be able to require, there are various manufacturers of soil cells. However, Silva cells are very difficult to design. So you can't just switch one soil cell from another, so hopefully I have justification to use Silva soil cells.
Was Googling it, Jack.
Figure somebody what.
Okay, are there any other comments from council questions?
One comment that I, I mean, you were asking sort of what are councils priorities? And being one of the newbies, I was not around during any previous discussion. But part of what I want this project to do. Is to connect the university to downtown at a bike and pedestrian level. In a way that is inviting, that causes people to say, oh, that's an easy walk. Or that's an easy bike ride or something like that. Right now, the it's it's a. It's not a very pedestrian friendly place. For one thing, half of it's under construction of various sorts. But and hopefully by the time the end of twenty twenty four rolls around, we will have gotten through all of this construction. But people, I I would, I would like to see it be the kind of, you know, almost a boulevard. Kind of sensibility to it that causes people to to like it as a as a bike and pedestrian way. And and hopefully maybe we get away from some of the cars along there.
So we have an upcoming joint session, and if the goal is to connect UVA to the downtown, then UVA needs to participate at a higher level. If they are going to be the primary users of the service and with the cost, so that's just something to think about when we have our joint session. Because if they're the primary consumer, then their five million dollars is insufficient.
I'm not saying they would be the primary consumer, but certainly they would be emitted, that that's an important piece of things. Obviously, part of what we want to do is we want to have people feel like they're like, it's easy for them to get downtown. And that would help downtown business and so on, as well as helping people feel like they can get down to the university from downtown. And so it's a, it's a two way, literally a two way street. Anyway.
Any other comments, questions? First, I'm reluctant to do this, I feel like I'm starting something that someone else is going to ask for an open public comment again after closing it, but we'll do it this time.
Mayor Walker, this is Peggy Van Yerres, Peggy, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mayor Walker, I was watching on Facebook and I couldn't figure out how to get into the public hearing, and so I. Afraid I finally just did, and that's why I'm late, I'll only take a minute. And I want to just reiterate, thank you for talking about the Dury Brown Bridge. I think that, you know, Cole Hendricks has often said that Dury was probably the most unappreciated person in this whole community, a great civil rights leader. And so I think the things that Kate and I have talked about is there are many ways to make that bridge more visible and so that people. Can understand about these important people, but we're not saying banners or this or that or the things to do, we're just giving suggestions. And our suggestions are not very expensive either, but right now you don't even see the name Dury Brown very well as you walk along. So just want to reiterate, we're not saying do this or that, we're just hoping to make it a little more visible and not, you don't have to spend. You know, a tremendous amount of money to do that, considering the cost of the whole corridor. So I don't want to tie the hands of the designers, but just some thoughts, you know, to honor this incredible man and other people that have done so much for this community. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
No, ma'am.
Okay. All right, so we'll close public comment again. Councilors, are there any additional questions or comments? Okay, staff, do you have everything you need from us at this moment?
Yes, thank you very much, I'll move forward with the value engineering as well as knowing that statue will not be moved with this project. And I can move forward with the environmental and I'll be getting back with you for both.
And I would just like to thank Jeanette. Was, this was a great presentation, great to get an update on such a big public project.
Thank you very much, and thank you.
Thank you so much, really appreciate the update and the timing of it, it's been really helpful.
Wonderful.
All right. Have a good evening.
Leave early for once.